...for briefing. The event was in fact over, the crowd had been dispersed. Most of the remaining activity, which was some small groups of agitators, was occurring three to four blocks away from that location. At that location, there were a number of news media gathered. There were also a number of the principal organizers of the group who were there just talking with the news media.
And joining us now by phone is Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti. Mr. President, always good to have you on Council Week in Review.
Thanks so much, Jack. Great to be back.
We've been hearing at length about this City Council Task Force looking into the events of May 1st and beyond. What are the objectives? What are you trying to achieve with the task force?
Well, one thing we didn't want it to be was another layer of investigation. We wanted this to be oversight of all of the investigations that are ongoing and to ensure that the public's voice is heard in these investigations, so that we can make sure that the community, that people who are involved in the area around MacArthur Park, at the police unions, individual officers if they want, that everybody would have a place, that their voice would be heard, and to ensure that these investigations are really targeted towards getting to the bottom of what went wrong and how we can prevent it in the future.
If you're looking specifically for public input as well as the formal investigations, where would meetings like this be held? How will you make them public? How will people know?
Well, first one, we held in the community, in a school adjacent to MacArthur Park. The next meeting, which will probably be in about a week and a half, most likely will be back in the community as well. And we want to make it as easy, as friendly, as open, and as accessible to members of the MacArthur Park-Westlake neighborhood. To ensure that nobody feels that they have to go long distance, we'll probably have some hearings at City Hall, which is close by, of course, but we really want to emphasize that this is a wonderful community, a place where people have done tremendous work in the last few years to make it safe, and that we want to be able to protect people's rights to be able to be out there, be it media, be it a group of lawful assemblers, or be it police officers themselves.
Speaking of which, of course, we've seen Chief Bratton before the council last week, again this week, preliminary reports on the investigation that he's been giving you bits and drabs of. When can we expect a final report?
Well, we had a good update, 30 days that we mandated to come back, and that was last week and this week. They estimate another 30 days they'll come back to the full council, but the work of the task force is to keep up every week or two with the ongoing investigations. The information we learned this past week was very helpful in looking at a timeline of what happened. Certainly, we got the perspective from the eyes of the police in terms of what went wrong and what was going on with some of the agitators. We asked for more detail in describing what would you do differently? How should policy change? And what institutional shifts does the Los Angeles Police Department need to undertake to make sure that everybody is protected and doing their job? Be it cameramen and camerawomen from the media, be it people who are out there expressing their First Amendment rights as Americans, or be it the members of the police department themselves, who we want to feel safe and we want them to do their job in as clear and transparent a way as possible.
Of course, people who have been watching this program, watching you people work, have noticed that you've asked for the command staff that was in charge during the incident at MacArthur Park, come before council to explain what happened, to submit themselves to your questions. So far, they've not complied, and I've heard some people say, "Wait a minute, isn't that insubordination?" What's going on here?
We have asked, led by Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Parks, and some others, have asked for the incident commanders, who have been spoken for by the chief and others, their actions and decisions have been described by the department, to have the opportunity to come before us and give their side of the story. They may turn that down, and under the Police Officers' Bill of Rights, they have the option to whether they want to come or not when a formal request has been made, but we wanted to ensure that the police department was making that request, and what we found out this week was that request had not yet been made, that everybody just assumed that they'd say no. I think that those officers have to make those decisions themselves, and that there could be a great deal of very important information added by hearing what it was like on the ground from those commanders themselves. If they do refuse, the council does have subpoena power, but we need to look at what's the most effective way of getting to the bottom of what happened, and obviously with personnel investigations going on, some of these individuals may want to, you know, prefer to remain silent and let those investigations go their way.
And also, I gather that it's quite possible that in making some early personnel moves during the first week after May 1st, Chief Bratton may have put some people beyond your reach with subpoenas.
Yes, well, no, we have actually, our subpoena power is across the board, it's not just for city employees, so if we exercise that subpoena power, that's something that we could ask of any resident, anybody who's here in Los Angeles. But that's only really, that's the nuclear option if we can't get the information in any other way. And if the investigations are doing their work in the right way, we should not only have their answers, you know, in the detailed reports that will be issued, but if there are any fragile or delicate issues that we need to hear in closed session, we have that option to go into closed session to ensure that we're protecting the city against a liability and to ensure that we're protecting the privacy of those investigations. But we are really bending over backwards to make this as public a process, because the public, after all, were the ones that were affected, and they deserve to make sure that their government is ensuring this doesn't happen again.
And I have a feeling you'll also get some pretty extensive media coverage, because members of the media and obviously our professional organizations are very interested in watching this as well.
Unquestionably, and we've been working very closely, actually, with a number of media organizations to push LAPD to articulate what the media protocols, which we had seen develop after the Democratic National Convention of 2000, those protocols had been put in place. It seems like many of those were not followed, and so we want to ensure that the task force, probably one of the meetings will be exclusively to hear from the media what went wrong and logistically, how can we set these things up better to ensure not only, of course, that the excesses we saw never happen again, but to ensure the smooth flow of information and that the rights of the media, even in chaotic situations, are protected. And that's the heart of the matter for me, is that even when things get tough, the DNC protocols guarantee that the press can stay on site in the midst of a skirmish, because it's very important for accountability, it's very important for Angelenos to know what's going on in their city, and when we lose the ability for the press to tell that story, it's a sad day for all of us.
You've had a chance to hear from several members of the command staff of the LAPD. Will the officers who were actually on the front line, May 1st, as well as the participants in the march who have been identified possibly as agitators, will they be investigated, disciplined, brought before the city council?
Well, not before the city council, I mean, the agitators, for instance, won't be coming to testify before us. I mean, this is, again, not an independent investigation. What it is, is we are trying to ensure that the oversight and the actions are occurring to right what was wrong and to make sure that there is justice served here. Justice served may mean disciplining some police officers, protecting other ones so that there's no scapegoats, making sure that agitators have indeed been investigated, arrested where they were assaulting officers or anything else, and at the same time that the members of the press and the regular people that were out there, that their concerns, their injuries and other things are addressed. So we're not looking to do the investigation, we're ensuring that the police commission does its job and the inspector general, that we, anything that goes on at the FBI level or the district attorney's office is folded into that mix, and that at the end of the day, the department with its internal investigations unit makes sure that the discipline necessary will occur while the policy changes for the long haul.
And of course, you as council president and your fellow council members, you do have a fiduciary responsibility here. Forty-two people hurt, seven police officers included. In terms of lawsuits, this could cost Los Angeles taxpayers a good deal of money, yet, couldn't it?
Absolutely. All Angelenos, all of us, will pay for this, which is why it is such an important issue. This is not an isolated incident where a couple people, you know, might have crossed the line. This is something that we all are going to pay for, quite literally, for some time, and to ensure that we don't pay this sort of money out again for violations of folk civil rights, and that we protect our police officers when those sort of provocations occur. We are smarter, we are better, and we should have the training than what was reflected that day on May 1st, and I have tremendous respect for the men and women who put on a uniform every single day to protect us, but we also have to protect our rights and the rights of the media, and that's the heart of this matter. That's our, not only fiduciary responsibility, that is our moral obligation.
Well, we will all be watching. With your help, District 13 Councilmember and Council President Eric Garcetti, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks so much, it's a pleasure.
There was no vote necessary on item number 33, the continued consideration of the Los Angeles Police Department and Board of Police Commissioners' report to the council. The matter will stay open for further reports to the special task force. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then, go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions in their entirety using the new City of Los Angeles video on-demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 8th, 2007. On behalf of Antoinette Feliciano and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Hey, John, lower the gun, buddy. John, leave the gun.
Working as a team.
Go ahead and put the gun down. John, nobody's gonna come at you, all right? We're not still a whole lot better if you were to lower that gun.
To protect and to serve.
Why don't you come back here to me, all right? All right, that's good. Walk forward to me with your hands up, John.
Put your hand up.
All units, go forward to six.
Thanks for working with me.
2910, show me code six, and the article search for the Amber Alert.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
Another positive hit on this bag. We believe at this time that the vehicle is in our custody.
Any available unit to respond to the northeast corner, 7th and 4th, turn the Amber Alert.
6K to the 53 route.
40X11, show's responding.
Second to wear rounds.
This is it.
Let's go.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Call from the Amber Alert, missing child found, returned to parent, suspect in custody.
LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
Smith, Zine, and I believe that's, who else? Alarcon and Tom Labange. And I am waiting for Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Han, Mr. Huizar, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Garcetti will arrive at 10:30, and let me correct that, I believe Ms. Gruel will be arriving momentarily, although a bit late this morning. Okay, we've just been joined by Ms. Gruel. While we're waiting to start the meeting, I'd like to announce the presence and ask them to rise and be recognized. I believe it's the sixth, is it the sixth grade class? Four, three, third grade, third, I look, yeah, they did look a little on the small side. All right. The third grade class from the Accelerated School. If you would all rise and wave so that your parents can see you on TV tonight. They're here on a field trip, and I'm glad that you're here, we're all glad to see you. Thank you for coming down to see us doing our jobs. Thank you. And I believe there's another class in the back of the council chamber. If someone would walk a note up so they could be recognized, I will do that right away. If you could send a note up to the sergeant-at-arms on the side of the council chamber, then we can recognize you too. These are the first and second graders from Westwood Charter Elementary School, is that correct?
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Much better. All right, let's put the camera on them and give us a big wave. Westwood Charter Elementary School, first and second grade. Good morning. Glad you're here. While we're waiting, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, Mr. Huizar, Mr. Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, Wesson. If you would like to be heard on items listed on today's agenda or general public comment for items not on the agenda but are under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card, available at the back of the council chambers, and if you are in Van Nuys City Hall, same thing, in the back of the chambers. I'd like to thank the council members who have arrived on time. We have a few presentations this morning, and I believe Mr. Smith will be our first Mr. Labange can pinch-hit for you if you're not ready.
Good morning, Madam President. It's another great day in Los Angeles. Yesterday was Flag Day, where we saluted our flag of this great country, and today is now the 50th, which is another special day of June. I'd like to welcome from all over the world and ask them to come up here, a group called the Elder Hosters. Come up here, give them a big welcome. Come on up here.
They're from all over the country, from Corona, California, San Diego, Florida.
Been on a tour around the world in five days.
A tour around the world in five days, all in Los Angeles.
Right.
And they're going to Hollywood Boulevard, they're gonna put their footprints in at the Chinese Theater, that's right? We just wanted officially welcome you here, and children, this is what the beauty of life is. Sometimes, after you retire, you get a little time to take time to see your country and see your city, and hopefully you could do it a lot more earlier than some of us now here. Would you like to say something on behalf of Elder Hosters? Let me just introduce to you right now Marilyn Gordon, Marlene Gordon. Give her a big welcome there, Mr. Fisher.
Well, thank you, thank you, Tom Labange. Thank you so much. We've been doing around the world in five days in Los Angeles. Our first day was Italian L.A., our second day was Mexican L.A., third day was Asian L.A., and yesterday, we did a kind of a potpourri, we did French, Indian, Belgium, Jewish.
Greek.
Greek.
How about the Irish?
No. We love the Irish. But, you know, every time we do this tour, we have to include new cultures, because there are so many, what, over 140 different languages being spoken in Los Angeles, and it's wonderful to explore. L.A. is not one place, it's many. It's a trip around the world without leaving town, and we've been having a great time. An Elder Hostel is a group of people over 55 that are not just interested in taking tours, but they're interested in getting an education, and what better way than coming to L.A. to learn about the ethnic diversity here, which we love. It's like cooking with spices instead of just salt and pepper.
All right, Marlene, give Marlene Gordon a big hand, thank everybody, welcome, they're gonna visit the Tom Bradley Tower.
Thank you for coming by.
Great to, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Labange. Now, Mr. Smith, Mr. Greg Smith.
Can we get a group shot back?
Thank you for stopping by, ladies.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very pleased today to present to you one of our great employees who's leaving. Dennis, come on up, your personnel too, come on up here, join with us. Dennis Zine, Chairman of the Personnel Department. Unfortunately, Ed Reyes couldn't be here today, he's out today, but I wanted to present to you one of our great retiring employees, and we always want to honor people who have given so much to the city of L.A. Cora Smith leaves the city of L.A. with 43 years of public service to the people of Los Angeles. Always known for her warmth and her compassion, always very cheerful and meeting everyone and every day with a smile, Cora Smith was really a gem to work with. She came to the city of Los Angeles right out of high school, and she began working her way all the way up to senior city planner. Cora began working with us as a senior clerk stenographer in the city health department. Most of you don't even know, but we actually used to have a health department until we closed it down and sent her over to the county. She then transferred to the planning department and worked in the public counter out in Van Nuys. Cora later transferred to the Bureau of Engineering, also in Van Nuys, and then back to the planning department in 1974 as a senior clerk. Having great people skills and great talents at working with the people of the counter, she promoted within the department to planning A1, planning assistant, and then planning associate, where she really shined with her work in the general plans and zone changes. Everyone realized that we had a real gem and a very conscious employee with Cora Smith, and then she promoted on the way up to senior planner, and finally to senior city planner in 2004. She's always been a great pleasure to work with. She survived working many years with my former boss, Hal Berenson, which was very difficult, but she did it with a smile and survived, and now she's worked for many years with Ed Reyes. I know that everybody that has ever worked with her and my staff who is here, Phyllis Winger, who's been in the planning department with my office and Mr. Berenson's office for almost 20 years, always really enjoyed working with Cora, because she was just a gem to work with, a pleasure to work with, very straightforward, honest employee that we're always very proud of. And so I'm very pleased to present to you with 43 years of public service, much of it in the San Fernando Valley, but also a lot of it down here in a senior role, Cora Smith, and thank her for her dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, and particularly the people of San Fernando Valley, where you spend a great deal of your life. And I'd like to turn over first to my colleague, Mr. Zine, Chairman of the Personnel Department.
Thank you, Matthew, Greg. I just wanted to add that Councilman Hal Berenson was here for many years, and his chief of staff was Greg Smith, so any problems Cora had were probably caused by Greg Smith. Not by Hal Berenson. Cora, 43 years, that's an incredible amount of dedication to the people of Los Angeles. I see, Michael, you should come forward too, Mr. Legrand from the planning department. Aren't you like the second in charge? Are you up there, come on down here. We got a representative from the department here, from the planning department, Mr. Legrand, the grand man. It's commendable, when someone does 20 years of service, 25, 30, but you think of 43 years of service, when you look at the city of Los Angeles, you look at how the city has been laid out, the San Fernando Valley, other parts, and if it wasn't for the orchestrated, demonstrated efforts by planning department, we wouldn't be in the point where we would have an organized community effort, we wouldn't have the prestige that we have, the city of Los Angeles, the second largest city in the United States. So Cora, on behalf of myself, the entire population of the city of Los Angeles, our city personnel, it's people like you that have that dedication behind the scenes, you get things done, you make it happen, and how many times you been to city council in 43 years?
An awful lot.
In this room?
Too many.
Okay. All right, so too many years. Most people have done that time, behind the scenes, getting things done, and the population doesn't even know they're there and they're working hard every single day on behalf of the people of Los Angeles. So congratulations, 43 years, all those years of dedication, that pension is well deserved, and I hope you enjoy it. And is this your husband, ready to go to Hawaii?
Yes.
He's ready, he's ready, he's got his bag, he's got his, he's been ready. Again, congratulations to you both, and enjoy those many years, happy retirement around the corner. Congratulations. Mike, Mike Legrand from planning department, you're the assistant director.
I'm chief sten administrator.
Or whatever you are, you're a big shot over there.
I'm the stucky, all right. Having worked with Cora for many years, one of the things that I appreciate is her service to the city, whether it was a resident, developer, council office, Cora always had a professional manner in dealing with people and being able to understand and have empathy for their issues. One of the best things I learned from Cora was that almost any issue that comes across council motion we deal with, in the past somewhere, one of Cora's files has come up before, and so very quickly, Cora's able to give us a quick history of this item and how it's come up in prior years, whether it was 1940, 1980, or 2007. Cora was very, an encyclopedia of knowledge for us to always count on, have a professional approach and be able to provide counsel to the department as well as her colleagues with answers that council expects, and a depth of knowledge that's really very, very well appreciated. So on behalf of the planning director, Gil Goldberg, I'd like to say thank you for your years and years of service and always being there to mentor and develop the staff in our department and being a friend and a mother figure to many and many of the staff that you've always raised in this department.
Thank you.
And now, Cora, would you introduce us to your family who's here today, who lived through that 43 years, and also if you'd say a few parting words, I know you've been here many times, but for the last time officially, if you would.
I have my husband here to my left, Frank, and my daughter, Dawn, that have been my support over the years. I just want to thank you very much, it's been a long, long time I've worked for the city, and it's been a pleasure, and I hope I've made a little bit of contribution. One of my major parts of working with the city was in the planning department under the code studies unit, doing all the code amendments to the Los Angeles Municipal Code, so that's my biggest history for everyone, and I have enjoyed it, and I'm going to miss a lot of friends, colleagues, and all the people that I've met over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Cora, a pleasure working with you. And now if we could go in with... And now if we could go in the back and see if...
Thank you very much, Cora. And congratulations. We will miss you too. Mr. Smith, are you ready with your next one? Okay, great. Mr. Cardenas, would you like to go next?
I'd like all the kids who are involved in the LA Bridges One program who are here to please come forward and their mentors and Richard Benbow, the general manager, Nancy Navarro, program director, please come forward. Good morning. Today I want to recognize and congratulate each one of these young people on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my colleagues of the city council. These young people represent many young people who have participated in the LA Bridges program this year, particularly those in the program who are just completing middle school. These young people made a choice to participate in LA Bridges because they wanted to improve their grades, develop proper and appropriate interpersonal skills, and go on to leadership in their schools and in their community. We recognize that these young people will need our support in carrying out the many positive lessons they've learned in the LA Bridges program. With a commitment to education, self-awareness, respect for family and community, we know that the many negatives that could lead them to a path of, uh, self-destruction will not influence these young people. The Community Development Department is doing its part through the LA Bridges program, which provides young people with alternative activities and model behaviors that allow them to choose a better path. I'd also like to thank all of you for taking advantage of the LA Bridges program and for being here to do, uh, to present all of the LA Bridges graduates before the city council. We're truly pleased to see all of you young people today and are proud to recognize your accomplishments. I'd like to thank all of you young people, including Zuleka Beltran from Stevenson Middle School, Andrew Garcia from Fulton Middle School, Thalia Garcia from Virgil Middle School, Jesus Ochoa from Bethune Middle School, Jesse Sapien from Bret Hart Middle School, and Antoni Woods, Bret Hart Middle School. At this time, I'd like to ask the general manager, Richard Benbow, to come forward and tell us a little bit about what wonderful things they're doing with these young people. And then after that, we'll hear from Nancy Navarro, one of the program directors.
How you doing, Richard?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, this is a very exciting morning to be here with these young people who are, um, exemplary of the fine work that the Bridges program is doing in the community. As you know, the Bridges program is, is, uh, two-pronged. One is, um, prevention and the other is intervention. These young people are involved in the prevention program and as the councilman pointed out, have made a choice of which road to take in their lives. And we are so proud of them. We work with them on a daily basis. We assess what their needs are and we try to be the support for them, uh, that we know is so necessary in today's world. So again, we're very proud to be here, very proud of the staff that has done the tremendous work that has gotten the kids to the point where they are today. And it's just a very good day for all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Navarro, Director of LA Bridges. It is a huge honor to be up here with these very accomplished and committed youth. I don't want to, uh, forget to say also that the commitment and the effort, the hard work of these youth would not be possible if it weren't for the support of also their very supportive families. They are here today with their children as well. A big applause for the youth and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a certificate of recognition. Our first one is Zuleka Beltran.
Say hi, say thank you, wherever you want.
Thank you for everything, for this, um, award. And it's been an honor to be in the LA Bridges program. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Andrew Garcia.
I've been a graduate, um, being in the LA Bridges program. They helped me a lot. They made me get my grades higher.
Thalia Garcia.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? I would like to say thank you for the LA Bridges program and the council members and for Ms. Summeron and Ms. Duran and everybody that's here. And it's a blessing to have you guys all here. And thank you for this wonderful morning. God bless you.
Jesus Ochoa.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? Um, well, thank you for this award. You know, it really means a lot to me. You know, the LA Bridges program really helped me a lot, you know? Thank you and keep up the good work.
Jesse Sapien.
Thank you for this opportunity to be in LA Bridges. They helped me a lot. Thank you.
Antoni Woods.
Hi, I just want to say it's, it's been a, a great honor to be in the LA Bridges program. It helped me a lot in my life. And I just want to thank the staff members and everybody who helped me. Thank you.
Well, like they say, you learn something new every day. And I think these young people taught us politicians something, brevity. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Is, uh, Mr. Smith ready for our next presentation? Mr. Smith? No? Okay. Tom, uh, I think she indicated Tom Labange. I don't see Tom. Miss... Okay. Mr. Labange is, Mr., okay. Sorry, Mr. Labange, I think we're going with Mr. Zein, Ms. Perry says. So, Mr. Zein.
Oh, you're up? Good job. We're all gonna take a picture in the back.
Thank you, Madam President. Raymond W. Walker. Firefighter Staff Assistant, Raymond W. Walker, retired from the Los Angeles City Fire Department after 32 years of service, people of Los Angeles. So if you'll come forward with... Wow, the whole group here. Chief Duca, how you doing? We've got the fire command here. We got Ray here, we got his family here. Raymond Walker, appointed to the fire department February 16th, 1975. Proudly served in the United States Army before joining the fire department. Assignments throughout his career included, Fire Station 90 as a firefighter for five years, public service office for two years, Fire Station 58 for two and a half years, Fire Station 50 for two years. Staff assistant in 1998 to the present time chief's aide, serving Van Nuys Battalion 10 for two years, North Valley Battalion 15, one year, East Valley Battalion 14, three years, Downtown Battalion 1, one year, East Valley Battalion 14, eight years, and West Valley Battalion 17, which is covering the 3rd district.
Yes, sir.
A fire chief. And a fire chief's here too. The whole command's here. Everybody's here. Walker is known as the gentleman of the fire department, always in good spirits and heavily involved with his church. Was involved with marriage encounter and has helped many firefighter members in their, with their personal issues, their personal lives. Strong religious convictions and ties to the church, along with his quiet demeanor, have allowed him to be a confidant for many firefighter members and their families. Has worked in different locations for numerous chief officers, which has given him experience, expertise, and exposure to the best in his field. Currently the second staff assistant in seniority position for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. 32 years of service, four years in the drop program. His wife, Jody, they have eight children and 11 grandchildren. Retirement plan to enjoy his large family, especially his 11 grandchildren. And since Sunday is special day. It's very special. Uh, the Los Angeles City Council hereby congratulates and commends you, Raymond W. H., Raymond H. Walker. Make sure I got that right. For your 32 years of dedicated and devoted service to the citizens of Los Angeles, we extend best wishes and happy retirement and a rewarding retirement. Well deserved. Uh, we have, you're not gonna speak yet. We're gonna hear from the fire chief. And then we'll hear from Chief Duca because I know Chief Duca has had the pleasure of working with you for the last few years.
And Mr. Zein, uh, would I like to, sorry?
Tom Labange, oh. Tom Labange, you know, you know, he always wanted to be a firefighter.
Yes.
And he never made it. But here he is, Tom Labange.
Thank you very much.
We're not gonna say why he didn't make it, Tom.
That's okay, ladies and gentlemen. I, I did want to be a firefighter. I did take the test at Hollywood High School on a Saturday. I did not pass the test. But years later, I met a fellow, and I'm talking too long about him, but I met a fella who used to rub that in me, coach. He would rub it in me that I never made it to be a firefighter. But he became, and no disrespect for your great Cubs sitting there on the corner, he became LAPD and it just goes to show that LAPD will take anybody, Dennis Zein, so, uh, that's that. But anyway, enough said. Let me talk about Ray Walker. You're talking about a great public servant who served this city so well in a role as a staff assistant to battalion chiefs throughout the city of Los Angeles. And he was all, always so helpful to me and my career. And what was so wonderful about his family, and if you look around right there, that big, beautiful, tall family, there's future firefighters in that chief. You could replace Ray Walker right there with all those young men in his family. I just want to salute you for who you are and for how you served. And for every day is another chapter in our lives and to turn a page and to retire, to walk away from a great job, strong and healthy, at the peak, is the greatest thing in the world, Ray. So I want to thank you for what all you've done for the fire department and all the members of the fire department. Because usually in a time of need, uh, and we look at, this is a classic picture right here, I wish I had my camera. There's the fire department family on the left. There's the family, his family on the right. It's all about family and the city's all around. You've helped so many firefighters in their time of need, uh, in, in the lowest points on severely challenged events and incidents. And I just want to personally thank you. You're a wonderful man. I love you and I am so proud of your family. Give Ray Walker a big hand, everybody.
Now time for the fire chief? Time for the fire chief.
Good morning. I can't express what a pleasure it is to be here today to thank Ray for his many years of service, not only to the fire department, but to the city of Los Angeles. Uh, it's, I think it's important for me to point out that Ray and I were in the same academy class in the fire academy 32 years ago. Uh, he doesn't like to be reminded of this, but he was the oldest member of our class. And so we looked up to him then and respected him then, and I look up to him and respect him even today. Uh, Ray has always carried himself in a very professional manner, uh, highly ethical young, uh, man and, uh, someone that's a perfect example to all of us. So again, Ray, congratulations.
I heard Councilmember Smith say brevity, so I will keep it, uh, short. Uh, I've had the extreme pleasure of working with Ray for the last three years. He's been my staff assistant. And, uh, one thing for sure is you haven't seen me in city council in the last three years. That's because Ray has kept me out of trouble. I haven't had to come here. Uh, it certainly is a pleasure to be here. Ray is certainly deserving of this award. Uh, we appreciate it. Uh, when we look up in the dictionary, the word integrity, the word gentleman, Ray's picture's in there twice. Uh, he is certainly the gentleman of the fire department, the nicest guy you ever want to meet. Uh, I'm sure most of you have seen him at different fire department events. He's the person that sings for the fire department. Whether it be the funerals, the, uh, Grateful Hearts event in the West Valley, the Hope for Firefighters event, Ray's the man that's up there singing for us. Uh, thank you very much and thank you, Ray. I wish you the best retirement you could have.
I'll try to be brief. It's usually my strong point. But first, uh, I have a question for you. Has anybody told you today how good you look? I'm sure it's a long line, but I'd be happy to be part of it. I am truly one of the most, uh, blessed people I know. From birth and life to faith and, uh, probably the biggest part of that, certainly in my adult life, is having the wife I have. It's, it's not easy, and I'm sure this is true for everybody, but it's not easy to be the spouse of a firefighter. Jody willingly put her life on hold for, well, it's been 37 years now, uh, raise eight children. She's now assisting in raising grandchildren because in today's world it's so hard for young families starting out. It's my reason for being. I'd also would like to tell you I was blessed with a wonderful family. Uh, gosh, it's my life.
Ray, let's introduce, let's introduce the family. Let's introduce them all.
This is our youngest, we jokingly refer to him as our late in life surprise, Steven.
Family members, come on forward.
This is our older daughter, Bridget. She has four girls of her own.
Lily is her baby.
Lily's their baby. This is number two son, Chris, and the oldest of his two daughters, Samantha. This is Tony, number seven.
Number seven.
This is Mike, the oldest, the one who had to break me in as a father. He, he's married with three children. Store director for Ralph's in Third and La Brea. This is Johnny. Johnny's number five. And, uh, he works for Gothic Supervisor for Gothic Landscape. And, okay, Jenny, uh, God bless her, made the right choice. She has a strong work ethic and couldn't arrange her schedule, so she's working today where she should be. Number four is Kevin. I'll just let you know Kevin died in 1994. We, uh, he was 17, but we still count him. So, uh, we have 10 grandchildren, 11 on the way. In, you know, another blessing I had in my life before I came on and has continued through is Mike and Margie Perez. Mike has been my mentor in many ways in life, uh, certainly on the fire department. He's a retired battalion chief. They're godparents to Chris. And I could go on and on about the blessings, but, uh, obviously the one that you're so graciously celebrating today is my, uh... My life on the department. It's obviously time for me to go, but I, and, and this award, I know not everybody gets this, and I can think of hundreds of men and women who should be here. So it's in, uh, reference to the entire fire department that I humbly, uh, accept this. I love my brothers and sisters on the job. I ask you to love them, to take care of them, because I'll be gone here shortly and, uh, the end of the month. And help them continue to take care of you in their daily lives.
And Dennis, before Ray leaves, I just wanted to add my congratulations. Ray, I've, I'm up here at the, sitting here, say thank you to, uh, what you have done for this fire department. I've had the pleasure of interacting with you over the years. Um, and I think we need an extra special thank you to your wife, seven kids. That's quite an accomplishment, uh, during that time period. But it's clear you've been a key part of this family in the fire department. So congratulations. Thank you. And before these kids leave, these are kids from the accelerated school, the other group that are here. Let's give them a great round of applause, all the kids. Wave your hand, maybe we can have the camera shoot over to those kids, uh, sitting in the front row before they leave. Colleagues, I know they're gonna show the picture of those kids while we're waiting. We do have, uh... We do have 12 members present, so we're going to run through the agenda very quickly before we go on to our presentations. Again, we're showing the wonderful kids from the accelerated school, so thank you for being here today. Mr. Clerk.
Alec, Concardus, Gruel, Han, Weasel, LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. If we could please run through the agenda.
Approval in a minute.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
On the regular agenda, items one through eight are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing, council should continue the hearings and ordinances to July 6th.
Thank you. Those will be held over to July 6th.
Item nine is an appeal on a zoning administrator's decision regarding a conditional use permit, and the Plum Committee has submitted its report with recommendations.
Okay, is that item now before us?
It is.
Okay. There's no special on that item. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item nine, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Are you on nine?
We're on item nine.
Can we hold it on the desk, please?
Sure. We'll vote to reconsider that item and hold it on the desk. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Okay, that'll be held on the desk. Next items.
Item 10 is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District Nine. The recommendation is to grant the application.
Yes, Ms. Perry would like an eye vote on that. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Next items.
Items 11 through 18 are items which public hearings have been held.
Thank you. Any specials?
Number 12.
Number 12. Any other specials, colleagues, other than item number 12? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Next items.
Items 19 through 46 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials, colleagues, 19 through 46? Yes, Ms. Han.
I'd like to call 27 special.
27 special. Okay, we do have a card on item 37 and 38 that will be called special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the remainder of the items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Item 47 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold that on the desk.
Madam President, that would take care of the items called special on the regular. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special?
Please.
Alec, Concardus, Gruel, Han, Weasel, LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
There are two items on this agenda, and they are items 48 and 49, items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you. Any specials on 48 or 49? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Those items have been approved.
Do you wish to adjourn the regular and go back to the special?
Yes. I would like to also, 13 to go forth with, please. Any other items?
That would take care of all the items called special.
Thank you. We'll go back to Mr. LaBange and then followed by Mr. Smith for our presentations.
Harold.
And all those city staff that were here and those other items, if we've approved them, you may go back to your office. Mr. LaBange.
Presentations, we took a little break for city business, and now I'd like to ask to welcome Glenn Harrell up here, who's a wonderful person, an entrepreneur, a great graduate of John Marshall High School. And here we are celebrating his work in the community as a businessperson with his wonderful, wonderful shop on Hyperion Avenue called Say Cheese. One, two, three, let's do it again. One, two, three. Say Cheese. Say Cheese, very good. And Say Cheese has been very, and guess who their, one of their favorite customers of Say Cheese is? They work in the city hall complex. You get a memo from them every two weeks. Middle initial is N. Let's hear it for Laura Chick, who often visits Say Cheese. Is that correct there?
Yes.
So that's very good there. And we're here also joined this morning with Nikki Irving. Good to see you, for the Reardon Foundation, who's here to support Glenn Harrell on this. On behalf of this city, I want to salute you.
Thank you.
I want to salute you too, because the biggest thing about a neighborhood is its businesses and how they interact with their community. And you've been, long before Trader Joe's moved in and when the hub was there, you've been the key focus point there. And now with the new traffic signal that's going to be installed, they're doing work on there, we're very pleased to salute Say Cheese for this very interesting boutique operation that for over 35 years. And that's such an amazing period of time, because you look so young, which is so good, as the owner and operator, president of Say Cheese. It is focused on supporting the community and bringing people together and sharing the joys of gourmet experience. I just want to salute you as the councilperson of the district and for your contributions to everyone who comes by your way and opens the door of your shop. And you're truly an angel in the city of angels, Glenn. I want to thank you and I am very proud of you. Let's give Glenn a big hand and Say Cheese.
Thank you.
Want to say something, Glenn?
Yes. Thank you, Tom. It's a great honor to receive this award and recognition. I would like to thank the city of Los Angeles. Definitely want to thank Laura Chick, your office, Tom. Thank my mother and my grandmother, who's not here, but I know that she's with me in spirit. It's a great opportunity to receive this. We will continue to serve our community and we will continue to be as humble and meek as we have been. Thank you.
All right, good job. Thank you very much. Glenn, come on over here, we're taking a picture. Thank you, Madam President. If you could sit there, I have one more, if I could, real quick, right here. Glenn, if you could go right there, be comfortable just for a moment.
Okay, before you do that, I'd like to acknowledge the accelerated school in the back of the room that is also here. If they could all stand, we're very lucky to have several classes today from the accelerated school, they're way in the back. And the camera, there you go. Welcome to our wonderful city hall.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. LaBange, this is an additional presentation.
This is an additional one. I don't know, I'll have to check with the clerk if the city attorney approves it.
That's okay. No, 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 I just want to make sure.
Members, I want you to recognize Patricia Malone in my office, another great Silverlake resident who served the city well. And I'd like to ask staff who's here today to join me for this very special saluting tribute to Patricia Malone for her selfless dedication and passionate, hardworking, and untrying to improve the quality of life in our community as a deputy of the fourth district. She has served our city well, and I just want to salute her with staff members. She came originally from Chicago. And Coach Miller, just to let you know, I was implementing, Ms. Han would know this, the Traffic Safety Valet School at Ivanhoe, where our children happened to go at the time. And there was a fellow, no disrespect, gentleman from England, please stand up for a moment there, just no disrespect for you, but there was a gentleman from England there. Thank you, we'll recognize you in a moment. Gentleman from England was crossing mid-block, and when I approached him to say I wanted him to cross in the crosswalk, he came over and, Coach, he wanted to kind of duke it out. Patty had my backside. Okay, this is long before I hired her, and I said, you know, it's important to have that type of skill and quality, plus great hard work and determination. There was no blows on Hookermer Street that day. It eased out there, but when I looked over my shoulder, I said, Ms. Malone should be working for the fourth district, and she certainly did many of the projects, which I know all you were aware of, the opening, soft as they were, of the observatory, and the activity of folks coming. I think that, Mr. Cardus, you were the first class coming that night when we had those soft openings, Patricia Malone coordinated. So I didn't want to let her get away. She joins her husband, who is one of the great producers in Hollywood, to say, Patty Malone, we all love you, we salute you, we thank you. Congratulations on your service to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. And true Patty Malone style, she doesn't want to say anything. So give her another hand, because the shortest speech we just gave.
Thank you, Tom. She's a great staffer, so glad you were present. She's wonderful. Okay, Mr. Smith.
The champs are back. The champs are here. Ladies and gentlemen, council, it has been my pleasure over the last few years to bring to you the champions of city baseball, the Chatsworth High School Chancellors. Over the last five years, they've been in the championship game all five years, winning three city championships. They concluded an incredible 69 and 1 run over the years, 2003, 2004, winning back-to-back national championships. Not city, not state, but national championships in '04 and '03. Nobody in America's ever done that, nobody. Their run to the championship this year included their number one ranking as city with a 30 and 6 record, their seventh overall city championship, now tied in the city with the most city championships ever. This spectacular team had four baseball players who hit over 400. Now, for those of you who don't know much about baseball, let me put that in perspective. That's not very good, that's phenomenal. But on top of that, we had one player hit 577. On his way to winning a state record, championship record with 24 overall home runs this season, Mike Mustakis also contributed to this team's record of 74, the most in the state of California. At all games, I went to a number of games this year, and all the games, Dr. Jeff Davis, who's the principal, called me aside and says, "Watch, we got a couple guys, we got a couple guys that are going to go in the first round of the national, professional baseball draft." Never happened, ever in America have one school produced two players in the first round, but he said, "We're going to do it." And he said, "You got to get their autograph." So I got their autograph right here, I'm wearing their hat, and that's exactly what happened. When he came to Chatsworth High School 18 years ago, Tom Musborne was not just a great coach, but a great leader of young men and a builder of young men. In his 18 years, he's brought the Chatsworth Chancellors to the championship game 11 times in 18 years, winning again seven times, two national championships. An incredible human being, incredible coach, a great motivator of these young men and builder of great baseball players of future. I am very pleased to present to you this fantastic coach, a man that I hope never leaves Chatsworth, because I know we're going to have many more. He was just, I was just saying, we're going to lose a lot of players this year. How's it look next year, Coach? And he says, "It looks pretty good." And I said, "You're losing five star players." And he says, "No, I think we're going to be okay." He has the attitude that my friend over at USC has, Pete Carroll, it's not time to just rebuild, it's time to reload, we're going to do it again. And so with my pleasure to introduce to you, to talk a little about what he had in a team this year, some of these incredible accomplishments, some of these great young players who are going to be, you're going to be seeing them out there on the Big Diamond in the professional baseball next few years. Tom Musborne.
And Mr. Smith, before he gets to speak, I think Mr. Cardus would like to add some accolades as well.
Okay.
Since my friend and colleague Greg Smith invoked USC, I think it's only appropriate that I, in my opinion, point out that you are following in the footsteps of one of the greatest coaches ever, which is John Wooden over at UCLA. And the reason why I say that is that consistency and that span of success with these young people really has a lot to do with you. I'm sure that they're great players, but that greatness isn't pulled out of them until they get a leader like you to actually teach them on and off the field how to be the best and how to bring out the best in them. Can you share with the city of Los Angeles maybe one of your points or one of the things that you share with these young people that maybe other coaches around here will actually pick up on and maybe give you a little bit of competition?
Things that we teach them first and foremost is how to be good people, good citizens, how to be productive. We've got three simple rules. We ask our guys, be on time, do things the right way, do the right things. And we teach them during the course of the season to do those things and be good people and good citizens, and that's our first and foremost approach as well as teaching them to be outstanding athletes. But I got a great coaching staff that really helps me and a great group of players. But those are the things that we go by in our program.
Wait a minute, you have a championship baseball team, and I asked you a question about coaching, and not one thing that you said was about hitting a fastball, how to put down a bunt, how to catch a ball, how to steal a base. You didn't mention any of that stuff. You talked about character, you talked about the person, not the player. What's that all about?
Well, we feel...
I'm doing a Rosendoll.
We feel to win championships that you need solid people. In order to succeed at a top level, you've got to have guys with strong character. And we really believe without strong character, it's very tough to be successful at a top level. And our goal year in and year out is to be the number one team in the city, one of the top teams in the country, and without strong character, it's just not achievable in our eyes.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that with us, and I want to make a prediction right here. Despite the fact that I'm jealous that you're not in my district, but I'm very happy for you and proud of you, I predict, look at the faces of these young guys right here behind the coach, and you're going to see that they're going to be coaches themselves, they're going to be leaders themselves, they're going to make a name for themselves, and they're also going to teach other people behind them how to be great leaders. So congratulations, Coach, congratulations to the team. You should be very, very proud of yourself. You have brought out the best in yourselves, and you have proven that you are the best at what you do throughout this country. So this is a great day for all of you to realize how great you are, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, if, Coach, would you tell us a little bit about the extraordinary quality of some of these players? I've got a couple baseballs I want the whole team to sign for us over there, because this is an extraordinary team. So please tell us about some of your incredible players.
Sure. Thank you for having us here today. It is quite an honor and a privilege to be here. We've had a special run. We've had some special players over the years, and especially this year. We finished the season at 30 and 4 and had a good run at the end of the year. We started off 3 and 5. A lot of people say, "Hey, Coach, what's going on?" You know, we get calls from Baseball America or USA Today, "How do you feel about things?" I said, "Oh, we'll be just fine." And then once we got on track, we really exploded. We hit 74 home runs as a program. Mike Mustakis set a state record for home runs in the season with 24. He set a state record for home runs in a career with 52. Mike was picked, the second pick overall in the draft this season. Also, Matt Dominguez was selected, the 12th pick overall. Mike was selected by the Kansas City Royals, Matt was selected by the Florida Marlins. And those two picks, 2 and 12, are the highest in the country ever by, from one high school. We also had a young man picked in the 19th round by the Cleveland Indians, Bobby Coyle. So a real talented group. Our pitcher, Trent Jones, went 15 and 0 for us, and then Nick Devian was one of our leaders, our senior. So our senior class really, really set the tone, our underclassmen have followed, and we're excited about what we've accomplished and where the direction the program is headed and what we've achieved this year. And I've got an outstanding coaching staff with Fred Podrip, John Tovin, Chad Redfern, and then of course, I don't think Coach is going to like this, but Coach Hatfield, it's his birthday today, he turned 85 today. So Coach is with us and doing a tremendous job. So it's truly an amazing day for us and been an amazing season in a lot of different ways. And again, we've got special players. The reason I do this, because we have special kids, quite honestly, and they're just a treat to work with, and I've thoroughly enjoyed my 18 seasons of coaching at Chatsworth High School. Thank you.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, the champions. Here's the trophy. I'm very proud to have this team in my district, obviously. I want to say also that Mr. Zine had Cleveland High School, which actually I share in the district, was in the playoff game with Chatsworth. I couldn't lose. And over in the invitational side, I had Granada Hills High School. So three of the four teams in the championship round were from the 12th district. So we're really proud, but we're always proud of Chatsworth, they're a great team to go see. My staff and I have been out there watching them, cheering them on. Exciting team to watch, great bunch of young men, and we're really proud of you guys. Congratulations, city champions, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Congratulations to Chatsworth. I'd like to now introduce our president of the city council, Mr. Garcetti.
If I can ask two LACC grads to join me with these, fun. And Letterman. Tom LaBange and Bernard Parks and all, everybody, come on over. And it's great, Warren Frotani's here as well, from our community college board of trustees. And from one championship team to another, but this one made history. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a real pleasure for me to be before you today to introduce to you the Los Angeles City College Men's Basketball Team, which has helped put our great city of Los Angeles in the headlines once again. Let's give them a round of applause for another championship that they earned this year. On April 12, 2007, the LACC Men's Basketball Team captured the spotlight of college basketball fans and followers everywhere, when the team reached a historical landmark during the season and captured its 14th straight North Division South Coast Conference Championship. That's right, the 14th straight North Division South Coast Conference Championship. Let me tell you, no other program in college basketball history, see now Mr. Parks has got up for that, he said, "That's pretty good," has ever won as many consecutive conference championships on any level, including the NCAA, the NAIA, the NJCAA, or California's Commission on Athletics. And because of this historic moment, I am also very excited to share with you that joining us today, we have Dr. Marshall Drummond, the chancellor of the California Community College System of the State, who arranged his schedule weeks ago, flew all the way down from Sacramento just to be here to be a part of this. LA City's journey into history started in 1994, behind an overall team record of 27 and 6, and a conference championship mark of 8 and 2. This year's record-breaking South Coast Conference title was framed around an 8 and 2 conference finish, and improved the Cubs' overall 14-year conference record to 115 to 17, for a winning percentage of 871.871. That's an incredible accomplishment. Five of those teams were absolutely undefeated in their respective conference seasons, 1995, 98, 2001, 2003, and 2004. There are many other advances that this team has led, from playing in the California State Championships, to being a finalist in the state championship in 2002, and having eight state final appearances. This team has brought college basketball to a whole new level in the last 15 years. Next year, this coming year, they will be seeking their 15th straight conference championship during the 2007-08 season, where their opening game tentatively set for November 7, 2007. Now, I know there's some basketball fans among us here in the room, I think Mr. Labons probably run up to get his basketball. I think that's the call he's making right now, because he likes to throw one right at the end of the presentation. So get, get ready, everybody, just get down, yeah, get down. But among the council, so let's, let's get ready, as the LACC Men's Basketball Team makes it a streak as they prepare to win their 15th championship this next year, but we are so proud, this only barely captures the, the achievements. And just so you know, when we looked at this, the Cubs championships are just, they, they beat the former all-time college basketball record of 13 consecutive conference championships from, Ms. Gruel? Which, which school?
UCLA.
UCLA, that's correct.
Oh, UCLA. Sorry, I thought we were talking about our high schools.
The Bruins' amazing run of championships was between '66 and '79, long, long before your time there, Ms. Gruel. But nine, and nine of those titles came under legendary Hall of Fame coach John Wooden, Wooden, excuse me. But the Cubs championship are distinguished from UCLA in three different, in that three different coaches participated in the UCLA conference titles, John Wooden, Gene Bartow, and Gary Cunningham. The Cubs have been guided by the incredible, indomitable Mike Miller throughout that entire streak. So let's give the coach an incredible round of applause. And before we hear from the coach, and some other notables, I'd like to ask my colleagues here, Tom Labons and Bernard Parks, to say a couple words. We'll wait for the basketball from Mr. Labons. Bernard Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say thank you to the Cubs for this tradition that they created. We feel fortunate in the 8th district to follow Crenshaw High School that has a similar record as it relates to achievement, but certainly at the level that the LA City College has done it is, is remarkable. And for one coach to have achieved that, one thing I've always been proud of is my time at LA City College. Unfortunately, it took me about eight years to find out it was a two-year college, and so it was one of those things that, after I realized that, I was able to keep moving. But it was a great experience. I was telling one of the kids here today that I have about 1,000 units of breakaway that I'd never collected, that are still there somewhere on campus. That's the cafeteria that I spent some time in. But it is a great school, it's going through a remarkable transition on its building plan, and certainly, I just wanna say to the coach and to the ballplayers, that you are experiencing something that most people never get an opportunity, and that's being a champion, that's being a, a part of a collective team that has been successful, and it gives an opportunity that you'll be able to tell everyone in, in the future about your accomplishments, because it can never be taken away. It'll be written in the, in the record books, you can refer to it, you can talk about it, it is something that you can cherish the rest of your life. But it's also a message that because of your early success and the long-term success of this program, there is no expectation, nor can you be guaranteed, that you're gonna have the same success down the road. So, experience it, cherish it, basically take that time to understand it, but it is an important part of your life to where you are part of something special, and needs to be commemorated. Thank you very much.
Good job there.
Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Labons.
No, thank you very much. Mr. Parks, thank you. Congratulations, because City College did serve the city well by getting two Cubs to the city council. Here's future possible police officers, firefighters, librarians, teachers, coaches, maybe even council members. City College was extremely good to me, and, well, he's talking about the money there, Mr. Parks, that's not like you, but you're a financial chairman, you can see that there. But the one thing that's so important is the work ethic that you learn playing the game. Football, football, we weren't hoop guys, but, it's like a penalty there right there.
Yeah, it's all right.
But the important things is the, the discipline that you learn in sport, to carry through life, and then share it to others, so that they have that too. And Coach Miller, I'm just so very proud of you, and the support that you get from Dean Jones and, and others, which is so important, to get that support for a great coach, because it puts City College on the map, and I'm proud, when I drive down Vermont, I see state champions, because, and now, this record, you can never take it away, as Councilmember Parks said. And Mark Drummond, it's great to see you back, because it's so special now as chancellor of the air government from the state back home, it's just a special day. And I, this is a little ball I keep in here from Pan Pacific Rec Center, where a lot of young kids, like you once were. Go back to your rec centers, and spend a little time with the young people, whether it's here in LA, or back home in North Carolina, Georgia, okay, they got it all.
I can hear it. God, thank you, City College Cubs, great job there, everybody.
And next, we have our community college board trustee, Warren Ferratani, please welcome him.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Madam Chair and distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council, it's an honor to be here with our team from LA City College. I mean, everybody talks about sports, and sometimes they've been cut in different areas because of budget problems, but sports is a fundamental part of the education program as we see it. We think we're about developing a holistic person, someone that has capabilities in all different levels, and athletics is clearly an important part of it. But as Tom mentioned, the issue of what you learn as an athlete, as Councilman Kardness mentioned relative to the Chatsworth baseball team, talking about character, I think that's what this is all about. So we have 14 great championships, but I think you need to hear something else. You need to ask Coach Miller, how many of his players, how many of his students have transferred on to other colleges? That's the most impressive part. So let me take this moment, Tom had just mentioned that Chancellor Mark Drummond, who is the state community college chancellor, is down here, but I'm here to tell you from the board, community college board, that we've just hired Dr. Drummond to be our chancellor for this district in Los Angeles. So, Dr. Drummond.
Thank you very much, trustee Ferratani. So he let the cat out of the bag. But honorable council members, I am so pleased to be back here. I've been serving with some of you in Sacramento, and now we get, get to come back here and help make this city greater, and help make the middle class greater, and get middle class jobs, and make these colleges better. But we're here obviously paying tribute to a, a good friend, which is Coach Miller. I'll just say briefly, when I first got here, almost 10 years ago, Carl Friedlander, who's sitting over here, is the head of the Faculty Guild, invited me to a basketball game at City College, and being a basketball fan, it didn't take me 10 minutes to figure out that Mike Miller was the real deal, as far as a coach goes. Took me no time at all. But you've heard all the other things, no one, no one yet mentioned, by the way, his win-loss record's even better than Duke's, University of Texas, Kansas. I don't think there's any major college in the nation that has a better win-loss record than his. But I wanted to just point out, what, what is so important to me, because I've visited with his teams through the years, I've watched him closely, he's a personal friend of mine, hundreds of young men, who probably wouldn't have had much in the way of opportunity, have come into that program, they've learned responsibility, whether or not they went on and played basketball at another school, and many have, there's 60 or 70 have gone to major colleges, and the jerseys are all on the wall in the gym, Indiana, Purdue, Duke, you name it, they've gone there. But it's seeing these young men grow, when they come and play for Coach Miller, and the attention he personally pays to them. The wins are great, the 14 things are great, it's all wonderful, but it's the young men themselves that are the greatest of all. So thank you so much.
Next, Dean Jones will speak from LACC.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today to honor Mike Miller and all of the players who have been with him. It's been exciting, the last three years that I've been dean of athletics, I've gone to all the games, home and away, and I was even part of their, part of their championship run. They're just wonderful, these are wonderful young men, and they're all successful, and they're doing well at the next level, too. And if you're around, please come and join us, we're, we're in our one gym, waiting for our new one to be built, and we'd love to have you all come and see what Coach Miller does. Thank you.
Then, the one and only, please welcome Coach Miller, on behalf of this championship team.
Thank you very much. A lot of humbling words for me to hear today, and I guess I'm most proud of the consistency that, that we've been able to display. I, I walked up today with one of our players, Ramel Beck, who's, who's back here, he played on our state championship team in 2003, and I think he was on the, the 10th, the 10th conference championship. And I asked him the question, as we were coming upstairs, what's more meaningful, the state championship you won, or the 14 years of conference championships? And he looked at me, and he said, "I think the, the 14 years of consistency means more, Coach," and he, he said, "I don't think that'll ever be broken." Yes, we have won some state titles, we've been in three state championship games, won two of them. Yes, we've put over 60 players in Division One basketball, many of whom are here today. Yes, we've, we're most proud of the graduation rate we have, which is over 90% in 14 years. We're, we're very proud of the kind of people that, that come out of our program. Behind me, to my left, is the MVP of the 1997 state championship, who's in his, first time I've seen him in his LAPD uniform. He's one of five that have come through our program that are now on the, on the LAPD force. he was a great example of what the program stands for, and I think I'll just briefly use him as, as a story. When I first saw him play at Kennedy High School, he was their starting power forward or center. And I saw something in him, and he had great work ethic and great desire. He came to LACC not because he had to, but because he wanted to. He was a qualifier out of high school, he didn't have to go to community college, he could've gone to university, but didn't have any scholarship offers. Two years later, when he left, he signed with the University of Kansas, they were ranked number one in the nation both of his years there, he played there with many NBA players, Paul Pierce, Ralph LaFrance, et cetera, et cetera. He went on and played professionally off and on, and, but more importantly today, you know, to see him in his LAPD uniform for the first time, you know, means a lot to me, and it represents what, what our community colleges can do for young people in the city of LA. Just, I wanted to acknowledge, before we, we leave, the support we get from our school and we have today, obviously my boss, Dean Jones, who spoke, we have Dr. E. Scott, Dr. Moore, from, that are deans at the college, we have Dr. Ireland, who's our vice president of academic affairs, Dr. Romali, who's our vice president of administration, we have Carl Friedlander, who's our AFT president.
Thank you, the doctor.
And you've already heard from one of our board members, Warren Ferratani, and, and our state chancellor, Mark Drummond. I always tell our players, when I'm recruiting them, that we have two Cubs on the city council. That's one of my recruiting pitches all the time. And, yeah, and they're, and they're both, and they're always been very supportive of, of LACC, and, and we're blessed to have this opportunity today, that Councilman Garcetti has provided us to come down and, and, and be here. We have a lot of faculty that came, and I think, again, that's what makes our program special. And what I, what I, when people ask me, I say, "It's not a team, it's a program." We have Jeannie Dumphy, the chair of the speech department, Britt Hasty, Ann Gallagher, teachers, Dr. Reggie Brady. We have teachers here today, and most importantly, we have players that represent the 14 years of championships.
You're missing somebody. You're missing somebody right there.
Where?
Right there, watch the signal. We missing anybody back there?
Is Ken here? Oh, and, and Ken, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Ken Sherwood, who's our academic senate president and speech, speech department. Thank you for coming, Ken, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Most importantly, we have our players, that's the backbone of, of any athletic team. Starting with, and I had to write it down, because it's been so many years, Leslie Bean came out of Fremont High School, and he was on our first and third conference championship teams. Leslie, are you back there?
Good job.
Jelani Janis, who I mentioned, from Kennedy, who, who, who was on the fourth and fifth, fourth and fifth conference championship teams, and our first state championship. Greg Gilmore from Crenshaw High School, where's Greg? Greg was on the, the sixth and seventh conference championship team. Ramel Beck, who went on to UNLV, started there for two years, he was on our ninth and 10th conference championship team, and all the way up to the present, we have Jay Brown, Chris Telsford from Hamilton High School, and Valiant Jones from Dorsey. And then, of course, I brought someone for our 15th, hopefully next year, Mundrell Young could be, could be on our 15th. Put a little, put a little pressure on him. But again, thank you, thank you all very, very much. I, I wanna, I wanted to just give, if I, if I could, Ramel, can you come up? I just wanted to, I just wanted to give, Ramel was on our state championship team in '03, I wanted to just give to Councilmember Garcetti a watch commemorating our, our 14th straight conference championship.
Thank you so much.
And, and I wanted to give to, we had a, just a little quick, we have a ring for Warren, our board member, and Carl Friedlander, our, our union leader, we have a, a ring, 14th straight conference championship ring, and I wanted to just present that to, to both of you for all of your support over the years, and...
I used to be over here.
Again, and, and last but not least, before I step back, two of my great assistants that have been here, Wendell Westbrook has been with me for over 10 years. I don't know how he's survived it, and Jim Heineman, who's been with us for two years now.
Tom, I'll, no, I just wanted to say too, it's good to see all the staff down here. Anybody work with Milt Davis over there at City College? He was my mentor. There we go, God bless Milt, he's retired up in Oregon, but I think, Eric, introduce this young man right here, who's gonna speak on behalf of the team.
Officer Janis?
Okay, how you doing, council members? I'm Officer Jelani Janis, with the Los Angeles Police Department, representing them, and also representing Los Angeles City College Cubs. It's an honor to be a part of this wonderful organization with the Los Angeles Police Department, and wonderful to be a part of this Los Angeles City Cubs basketball team athletically and academically. Coach Miller has done wonders for my career as a basketball player and as a person, and I just wanna commend him on 14 straight conference championships and two state titles. He's done an awesome job of developing basketball players, and most importantly, people. Thank you, Coach Miller, for all that you do.
And so with that, our most successful basketball team in Los Angeles history, we've got great basketball teams here, Lakers, Clippers, Trojans, Bruins, some others as well, Crenshaw High, but it's not only the most successful in LA, but most successful in the, the country's history. Congratulations to all of you for such a wonderful program of sports, and for a wonderful program of character and human development. We are so pleased that you're part of this city. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and a special welcome back to Mark Drummond. We're very excited about you being back here in Los Angeles, very lucky to have you, so... Mr. Clerk, I think we're gonna go to public comment, if that's all right with you.
I'm not gonna let you go.
Our, our public comment cards, after all the college have gone to the back, is Duke Russell, followed by Marilyn Jackson. Thank you. Yes, please go ahead, Duke.
The City Council.
We'll hold your time, Duke, so...
I think it's just great what the basketball team did at L.A. City College. My alma mater, I played college basketball, and I just am marvel at what they have accomplished there. I'm here, again, to plead to you to help at L.A. City College, to restart football, because you have seen today what it does for the young men of our city. I'm a former baseball player, college, and we are letting young men from our high schools, like Dorsey and Crenshaw and Hollywood, all the other schools, walk on the streets because there's no football. You have to do something, I think. I've made 50 speeches to the Board of Trustees, to Chancellor Drummond, to many other people there, and they will not tell the President what to do. The President is new in our city. He doesn't want football. Six other community colleges have football. It helps the young men and young women. I'm here also today to tell you that in February, there was a big story in The Times about the danger of freeway fumes. That information has been given to you. The new field at LACC is not going to be better than the Snyder Field. Members Garcetti and Labange in 2004 wrote a letter to the President of the Trustees and said that they hoped that the new field would be better. Well, it's not going to be better, ladies and gentlemen. It's going to be on the roof of a two-story parking structure, two blocks from the fumes of the Hollywood Freeway, a half a block from the fumes of the busy Melrose Avenue. As a former player and coach, that's one place I would not want to be playing. There's no baseball at L.A. City College because of the gigantic golf driving range that I hope Drummond, our new Chancellor, will get rid of.
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Our next speaker, Marilyn Jackson. Good morning.
Thank you. This one, I'd like to acknowledge the military. Since the beginning of the war, the Spanish-American, the World War I, World War II, Korean, Vietnam, and Iraq wars. I work for the VAH Patient Clinic at 351 East Temple. These are men who are from the poor area of which I'm from. They assist women who can't get established in life, who have children, who they assist by giving them money. And some of these children don't have food for diapers, clothing for infant food, so they are disfigured by not enough food. I'm one of them. We are ugly women. These men are in the service. They are my uncle, Clarence Taylor Jr., who assisted my mother. When they die, the service gives them a 21-gun salute. These are outstanding citizens from all over the country. There's nothing like the 21-gun salute. They give the flag to their brother, their mother, their sister. I would like to honor them and acknowledge them. One of these is my uncle, Clarence Taylor Jr. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes a public comment. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 9 was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer.
I'd like, we could continue that item until next Tuesday. Is that the 19th?
That is.
Yes, next Tuesday, please.
Okay, we'll continue Tuesday. Thank you. Next item.
Item 12 was called special by Councilmember Smith, and I believe that was for Mr. Zein.
Thank you. Mr. Zein, number 12?
Thank you. I thank Mr. Smith for calling that special. The item deals with a problem that we're having, and we need to resolve it. It's an ordinance that would make some change to the Deferred Compensation Administration Board. The City Attorney has informed me that some technical clarification needed to be made to the ordinance before council acts on the matter. So therefore, I ask that we continue this item until Wednesday, June 20th, and also request the City Attorney to present a revised ordinance at that time. Again, this is regarding the Deferred Compensation Administration Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zein, you are the only speaker on that item, so, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, it's just a request to continue to Wednesday.
Ask the City Attorney to do the revised ordinance. Okay.
Okay, we'll continue to Wednesday, and also ask the City Attorney to do the revised ordinance. Thank you. Next item?
Item 27 was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, item number 27.
Colleges, this is an item relative to dedicating and naming the lobby at Banning's Landing Community Center in Wilmington after George Delatorre. And if you've ever heard of Juanita's Foods, George Delatorre is the owner of Juanita's Foods, and that business has been in Wilmington since 1955, and he's provided over 100 jobs for Wilmington residents at Juanita's Foods. And more than that, George has really been a visionary in Wilmington. And he was the one that really pushed for the idea of a community center in Wilmington on the waterfront. And we actually, we held our city council meeting at Banning's Landing Community Center. So you know what a great spot that is, right on the waterfront in Wilmington. He became Chair of the Wilmington Community Advisory Committee of the Port of Los Angeles, and he spent his life advocating with my office, with the council office and with the port, to make sure that this community center became a reality. He also helped, I don't know if you guys remember, the statue of Phineas Banning, who actually founded the Port of Los Angeles right outside this community center. He helped with the development and construction of that statue by being a major contributor. He's been a lifelong supporter of numerous Wilmington organizations. He believes in our young people, and he also donates generously to the Wilmington Teen Center, the L.A. Harbor Boys and Girls Club, the Wilmington YMCA, Banning High School Boosters, and Dollars for Scholars. And because of this continued commitment to Banning's Landing and to the Wilmington community, the Friends of Banning's Landing Board of Directors wanted to name the lobby in his honor. The community room where we have our council meeting is named after Gertrude Schwab, which she was a longtime advocate and activist in Wilmington. You remember Gertrude Schwab, really was one of the first ones that began fighting for Wilmington, talking about the negative impacts that the pollution was having on residents. So the community room is named after Gertrude, but the Friends wanted to name the lobby of that building after George Delatorre, and I think it is fitting and appropriate, and the perfect way to honor a man who has also been a tireless advocate for the people of Wilmington. So I hope you will give me an eye vote on this today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 13 eyes. Next item.
Item 37 was called special for cards from the public.
Yes, this is from the San Fernando Valley, so we could go out to the valley for Sharon Brewer. If we maybe could take 37 and 38, she submitted a card for both of those items. Ms. Brewer.
Hi. Also, I also did public comment, but...
I apologize, I did not get that.
Okay, I did it before you started council, and when I did these other ones, and I really need to speak on that. But on item number 37, special event fee waivers, we have 11 on today's agenda, total of $51,411. And what I would like to ask is, there's two of them, two that say that they're reimbursing, and the sponsor is Jimmy P.A.O.L.O., and I noticed that he has taken and also submitted about 20 special event fee waivers where it's supposed to be reimbursed with CD-13. And so I was just wondering, within it since maybe March, so I thought that was quite a few events for, to be submitted by CD-13. With item number 38, all I wanted to take and do was go and say that the amount that is being waived is $16,230, which was done on a council on April 14, 2007. Now, will I be able to do the public comment, please?
Yes, we'll go ahead and do the public comment.
Thank you.
We will set the clock to two minutes for your public comment.
Okay. Do I do it now?
Yes.
All in one?
All in one. Before you actually do public comment, Ms. Brewer, I think we'll go ahead and, item 37 and 38 is before us. Madam Clerk, if you could open the rolls on 37 and 38. Close the roll, tabulate the votes. 13 eyes. Thank you. Now, Ms. Brewer, go back to you for your public comment.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer, public comment, this is about Encino Neighborhood Council, June 28, 2007, election that's 13 days away. On Friday, June 8, I emailed a public records request to Dunn and Carol Thorpe, the GM, for the Encino Neighborhood Council, 2007, Dunn approved election procedures. As of this morning, I have not been provided that information. 10 days up, June 18, 2007. The Neighborhood Council election procedures approved by the Los Angeles City Council on January 25, 2005, state on page nine, finalized election procedures must be approved by Dunn no later than 90 days prior to the designated election date. That date was March 31, 2007. Finalized election procedures adopted by elected NC Governing Board no later than 60 days before an election. That date was April 30, 2007. There are no approved election procedures out from Dunn or any that were approved by the Encino Neighborhood Council to date. The last mailing regarding the June 28 election was mailed on April 25, which had information about the First Candidate Information Session and Encino's meeting April 25 that night. The next mailing is planned for, to go out on June 21, 2007, seven days before the election. How does the public know that this election is taking place if the first, one mailing was done April 25, and there's not another mass mailing or communication that's going to be done until seven days before the election? This election needs to be postponed. I've told that to Carol Thorpe, emailed her, and she has not acknowledged the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Madam President, that does leave just the closed session item.
We do have a public speaker card on the closed session item, item 47, Jamal Hadad.
Dear Councilmembers, attached is a copy of my comments to the Plumb Committee, which I expect you to take into full consideration. In addition to my comments made to the City Plumb Committee, I have a new concern. I have heard the city of Los Angeles is in orchestration with some developers who intend to develop at Oxnard Street, which includes but not limited to where our business is located. It appears that the city has taken the path of attacking Frisky Kiri civil rights, and in conspiracy with others, the city attempts to make this property available for developers. The city, instead of going through legitimate eminent domain action, it is acting in this unlawful manner, and in the process, creating enormous damages to the Frisky Kiri. Please take note that we intend to pursue this matter as a separate action. In addition to the potential appeal of this current case, this will follow if there is The club, within its legal means, applied for exception. The judge gave us the permit in the first time. It got appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, and the city promised that they will let us operate. And then, the city mailed me my permit, and now they want damages for $6 million. Let's be real here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Clerk, I know we'll go into closed session now, make the appropriate announcement.
Could we, item 18, reconsider before we go to closed session?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Parks. We could reconsider item number 18. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 13 eyes. Ms. Parks.
I just would like to add a verbal instruction that was discussed at the committee. Because we know there's a shortage and probably a deficit in Prop A and C funding, that we wanted to put an instruction for the study to reflect a larger variety of revenue that may be available, and not just bring back a report that there's no A or C funds. And so we wanted them to look for and search for other funds for this particular expansion in their study, but not to just come back and say, "A and C funds are not available." That was a discussion that was at then, it was not in the committee report.
Thank you. So the report will just be amended to look at that as an additional option as it comes forward. Mr. Weiss?
We're just asking to explore a larger body of funding than Prop A and C, because there's a deficit in both, and the easy answer would be, there's no funds. Okay?
So they'll include that in the report back. Report's been amended to include that language. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 18, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 13 eyes. Thank you. We will now go into executive session. Mr. Safe Attorney, would you like to make that announcement?
Sure. The City Council shall recess to closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9A, conferred with its legal counsel relative to the case entitled People of the State of California and the City of Los Angeles versus Dino's Victory Roadhouse and Cross Complaint, the Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BC 353242.
Thank you. We're now going to closed session. Thirty seconds.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Very much, Madam President. We celebrated earlier today the installation of Thai Angels that are gateway, beautiful golden angels that are gateways to Thai Town and we want to thank and congratulate the entire Thai Town community on that. Also, at 1:00 PM, I know Councilmember Reyes is out of town, but his staff and everybody has worked very hard with Langer's, an LA institution that will be celebrating 60 years in Los Angeles at 1:00 PM. So if you're not watching this on the rebroadcast, it's still time to join us live for a great pastrami sandwich there later on today. And we also will be doing a planning 102 workshop tomorrow at the Will and Ariel Durant Library in Councilmember Labanja's district. It focuses on parking and allows people to kind of learn some of the parking code and some of the parking, planning law that's here in the city of Los Angeles. So please join us if you can. We'll be starting, I believe, at 9:30 tomorrow on that as well. And that is all. Thank you.
Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Alakon.
Yes, Members. Several things I just wanted to announce. At the Boys and Girls Club of San Fernando Valley, there's going to be a celebration of the Juneteenth, the 140th anniversary of the Juneteenth celebration. That will be at the Boys and Girls Club of the San Fernando Valley. We also are, Pacoima is also going to be hosting at the Pacoima Community Center, a Valley Idol competition, Battle of the Bands, and that's going to be Saturday, June 16, from 3:00 PM to 7:00. I also wanted to announce, by way of reporting back to you, on the Children's Museum, the 30-day period of the challenge loan that was provided, backed up by the Reserve Fund, enabled the Children's Museum to raise $1.3 million during that 30-day period. Their goal was a minimum of $1.2 million. We offered them up to $1.7 million in the form of a loan. The bottom line is, the $1.3 million will enable them to borrow an additional $1.3 million from the city's Reserve Fund that will be paid back June 30 of next year. Their goal was $2.5 million in order to trigger a $1 million grant from the County of Los Angeles. Construction will now continue and I want to express to you how significant that fundraising drive was and the challenge that we imposed on them. Last year, they raised $800,000 in the entire year. So in the 30-day period, based on the challenge grant, that they were able to raise $1.3 million. I think the publicity that was gained from the action was very helpful in getting out supporters who otherwise wouldn't have known about it. But I also want to thank my colleagues for hanging in there with a unique approach to use the Reserve Fund as a leverage and loan opportunity. And I still have the responsibility to make sure they pay it back before June 30. But I can tell you that the Children's Museum, construction will continue, the county will participate. They are on schedule to get their temporary certificate of occupancy and will start building the exhibits in the facility. It's a phenomenal facility. I encourage you to come out and I'd be happy to give you a tour. And they expect to open their doors for, in 2009, June of 2009. So I want to thank you again for helping us through this very difficult time.
Thank you and congratulations. That was great news today. Mr. Smith.
Congratulations, Mr. Alakon. You can have your credit card back now. You did a good job. Thank you. Just want to announce for anyone that's interested that we have an organization out in the San Fernando Valley called Operation Gratitude that has been shipping goods over to our troops in the war zone in Iraq and Afghanistan. Tomorrow at 11 o'clock, they're going to start packaging up the latest batch of stuff going over to our troops to say thank you, things that they need, things that they're not getting over there in the war zone. And tomorrow, they expect to package up the 250,000th package that they sent over to our troops. So anyone that wants to join with us, it's at 17330 Victory, the armory out there. We'd love to have people come out and help us package up those goods for our troops and our young men and women serving in the war zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, anyone?
On that note, thank you Greg Smith for inviting everyone to go out and assist. If you go, you're going to be tremendously pleased with seeing the number of young people and people of all ages wanting to put these personal care packages. And I want to point out, these aren't just care packages that go into a box and they open up a big truck where our men and women are serving and just start tossing them out. They are individually named with individual members of our troops, of our armed forces, and with their personal name on it. And in it go a lot of wonderful personal things. And the most wonderful thing that you're going to see, and I hope you get a chance to go and read them, they have enlisted the children of Los Angeles to write personal letters, draw pictures in crayon or what have you. And the words that these kids give to give that personal touch is just tremendous. And every single package gets a letter or a drawing, some kind of thing, personalized by a child here in the United States. So it's really wonderful to see that. They could use the help. As Greg Smith said, this Saturday, tomorrow, they anticipate putting together the 250th package to go up, excuse me, 250,000th package. 250,000 packages have been put together by volunteers and it all started with a wonderful woman, Carolyn Blaschek, who started doing this in her living room and it just exploded into this wonderful project that is not-for-profit. You can help out with donations, you can help out with your time, and it's just a wonderful program. Thanks for bringing it up, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and I'll be there with both of you tomorrow. So look forward to that. Yes, Mr. Parks and then Mr. Zine, do you have announcements as well? Okay, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. We have several events going on in the 8th District of, first of all, the annual Juneteenth Festival in Freedom Day in La Mirque Park will be Tuesday, June 19, 8:30 to 6 o'clock in La Mirque Park. Also, I had a very late notice on this, but there's going to be 50 employers at an LA youth job fair that's hosted by the Los Angeles Community Development Department in conjunction with the Urban League that will be held today from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at 12700 South Avalon at the Urban League Business Center. Also, on this weekend, one of our churches, Grace Temple Baptist Church, under the direction of Bishop Brodus, will be holding their first annual walkathon, Saturday, June 16, at 9 o'clock at their facility at 7017 Gramercy Place, and they will be holding that for the Collins Scholarship Fund. We also have a notice on our View Park Prep, had their first graduation yesterday. Their 4th and 5th graders will be having their unifying culture through arts today at 4:00 to 7:00 at their campus at 57th and Crenshaw. And then also, a number of our organizations in the 8th District will be participating in the American Diabetes Association Expo on Saturday, June 16, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Long Beach Convention Center. And then our Agape Foundation that's housed in the 8th District will be holding their annual Father's Day event, January, June 17, 1:00 to 5:00, at the Renaissance Hotel at 3,500 block of South Figueroa. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Yes, tomorrow at 8:00 AM, Optimus International First Annual Dad's Day Dash. It's going to be at Warner Center Park, 5800 Topanga Canyon. Also, on Sunday, Father's Day, they will have the concerts in the park again at Warner Center Park. And I want to wish all the fathers, all of my colleagues who are dads, a very happy Father's Day and Greg, your son's overseas, I understand, the best to him on Father's Day. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. If not, we do have adjourned motions. If we could ask everyone to please rise.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Ruth Graham, who was the wife of the great evangelist Billy Graham. She was 87 years old and had been fighting a recent illness. And there's a lot of great things about this woman. I was fortunate enough to get to meet her and be with her a couple of times, but certainly she was a great life partner. And when you listen to her children, the grown adult children of Billy Graham, they talk about because of their father's life and career of traveling internationally, she was really the one that raised them. And that's a great tribute to a woman who was able to support her husband's career choice, but also really did a great job of being there for her children when he wasn't. So she's a great woman and I think it's a good thing that we adjourn in her honor today.
All members.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move that we adjourn in memory of Margarita Forzan Rivas, who died on May 30, 2007, in her home in Elserino. She was born 1918 in Chihuahua, Chihuahua, Mexico, and she was the youngest of 10 children. She was the last living sibling. She and her husband, Henry, moved to the community of Elserino in 1946, where they lived for 61 years of her life. She and her husband were members of the Elserino Senior Citizens Club and the Lincoln Heights Senior Citizens Clubs. Margarita was a devout Catholic who was actively involved in the Guadalupano group at her parish, the All Saints Church. The foreign language section of the Elserino Branch Library was opened over 50 years ago thanks to Margarita, who was an avid reader and would regularly check out literature in Spanish. Margarita was the beloved mother of Rosemary McNutt and Carol Mares. She is also, she's survived by her loving husband, Henry Rivas, six grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. She will be missed by her family, her friends, and all the community of Elserino.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. We have three adjourned motions. First, I'd ask you to adjourn in memory of Donald Ray Priestley, who passed away on Friday, May 18. He was born December 1944.